The Tuesday, September 3, 2024, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I read in many of, among many of the articles that come across us on our phone each day that today, maybe some of you in the audience knew this, in looking at the flag, it reminded me that today, September 3, 1777, the flag behind us in its current iteration with blue and stars and the stripes was voted on? Anyway, it was selected. And so basically, the birth of our flag as we know it was today in 1777. Mr. Social Studies Teacher, did you know that, or am I correct?
You, yes, you are correct.
Okay, thank you. My phone did not lie. All right. It's customary for me at this time in the meeting to read an open podium invitation to our residents. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting. These council meetings typically occur the first and third Tuesday of each month. The open podiums are from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter, so we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Mr. Getcho, I believe we have an HRA meeting embedded within the normal city council meeting. Do I need to turn it to you, or just simply call the HRA meeting to order?
Mayor, feel free to call it to order. I can mention just the one item for the reason you're meeting.
I'll throw it back to you then. So, the HRA meeting, Housing Redevelopment Authority, which some cities have as a separate entity, we in Eden Prairie, historically, for as long as I can know about or remember, have had the city council act as the HRA. So, HRA meeting is now called to order. The first item of business is to approve the minutes of our last HRA meeting, which was held back on December 5, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve the HRA minutes from December 5, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Mr. Getcho, take it away.
Thank you, members of the HRA. So, both the city council and the HRA this month, sometime in the month of September, need to approve their respective preliminary tax levies, maximum tax levies. This obviously will be revisited again in December. Much more to come through the rest of the year, but September is that time to set those preliminary levies. I'm going to talk later, I have a few slides later on in the regular city council meeting about the city budget, but when it comes to the HRA budget for the last several years, the levy for the HRA has been money that we need to cover the staff time associated with all of our housing and development programs. We've chosen to just levy a tax proposed to be $220,000 next year. I believe that's the same amount it was the year before. We've moved a little bit from the $200,000 we had for a number of years, but $220,000 is still very conservative compared to the amount that we legally could levy, which is over $2.6 million. However, as the council is well aware, we have many other sources of funding outside of a tax levy for all of our housing programs, including one I'll talk about in the council meeting, which is our CDBG funds. But the levy that you need to vote on is an HRA, and the budget that you need to vote on is in the packet and is set at $220,000 for 2025.
And maybe this is a good opportunity to just comment that sometimes people legitimately like to compare one city, maybe comparing Eden Prairie to other cities around us, both our budget, our levy. And if you looked at an HRA budgeting levy amount from other cities around us, you'll get all over the spectrum, just different cities raise their money in different ways. You hinted at that. We have CDBG funding. We have various sources that we can take money and group money together to accomplish our objectives around housing. So, we choose to keep this rather low. Some other cities might choose to make this levy higher. It's just, again, cities do a lot of the same things. We just often go about it a little bit differently. So, it's often never apples to apples when you're trying to compare one city's levy to another. Counsel, any questions, comments, further discussion? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
A move to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed 2025 property tax levy to be $220,000 and accept the proposed 2025 budget of $220,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Is there a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
I move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Before we get into this next part of the meeting, which I'm really excited about, I just want to say, Senator Swazensky, that often you and other government teachers would send your students to meetings, and they would sit in the back and take notes. And sometimes we'd have 10, 15 of them, and a couple times, we'd have this HRA meeting embedded in it, and we'd go and adjourn the HRA meeting. You could see their expressions like, wow, that was a two-minute meeting. No, that was just the HRA that I have to explain. Now, we might be still fast, but we have another 40 minutes of a meeting. Anyway, I thought it was humorous at the time. Okay, Mr. Getcho.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We hinted at this at our last meeting, two weeks ago. We discussed how we have a state senator, our state senator, that covers all of Eden Prairie, the one state senate district that we have, with Senator Swazensky, has received some recognition from the League of Minnesota Cities, which is an organization, as I talked about a few weeks ago, that provides a lot of training and development, and also lobbying and support for 800-plus cities, all sizes, in the entire state of Minnesota, at the state and federal level. And the League of Minnesota Cities recently honored 25 lawmakers throughout the entire state of Minnesota, only a few senators, and our senator, our Eden Prairie Senator Swazensky, was one of those 2024 legislators of distinction. And I know, Mayor, you have a proclamation that you're going to read, and we hope that the senator can say a few words and accept the distinction and the recognition. A lot of what was mentioned at the League of Minnesota Cities level was the senator's help with dealing with the school resource officer issues. As you recall, there were some problematic issues with legislation from two sessions ago that our senator worked on this past session and the session before that. So, that was a big part of the recognition. He serves, as you'll hear in the proclamation, on public safety and many different education committees that had a huge role in helping kind of clear and fix, for lack of a better term, that legislation. But we are obviously very honored to have him recognized as one of, a few of many different state legislators as being one of the best, according to the League of Minnesota Cities. And I will turn things back to you, Mayor, for the proclamation and the rest of the presentation.
Great, thank you. Before I read the proclamation, I do just want to say that one of my favorite words, really, that is part of my role as mayor so often, is the word partnership. And we, as a city, as you know, we have such great partnerships with our school district, with our Chamber of Commerce, with our county elected officials, and with neighboring city municipal elected officials. But also, not but, and also, we have tremendous partnerships and connections with our legislators, chief among them then our state senator. And if you think about that, so often, when you get organizations that are connecting, it really comes down to people. And that's why sometimes organizations connect better than other times through years as years go by, because the people involved actually build a close relationship. And that's one thing that I'm just thrilled tonight that Senator Steve Swazensky's been not just an associate of mine, I mean, we both were teachers in the Eden Prairie School District, but a friend all these years. And to have him be excelling and then recognized for that, for those accomplishments, is something I am very excited for him. So, I will read the proclamation, and then I'll come down. And if you want to come forward, and we can, I don't know if anyone's taking pictures, yes, not, and then if you want to say a few words, you certainly may. So, proclamation, City of Eden Prairie, Hennepin County, Minnesota, Senator Steve Swazensky Day. Flag Day and Senator Steve Swazensky Day, that's amazing. Well, not the Flag Day, but okay. He's a government teacher, so he knows all this. All right. Whereas, Senator Steve Swazensky was first elected to the state senate in 2016, and has served on numerous committees, including education, which you were chair, education finance, education policy, elections, and state and local government, and veterans, and is currently the chair of the Civility Caucus. I hope that becomes on a national level, also for you. You would do great. Whereas, Senator Swazensky taught American Government and History at Eden Prairie High School for over 30 years, and has been recognized as Southwest Metro Teacher of the Year, Eden Prairie Teacher of the Year, and has received the Presidential Scholar's Influential Teacher Award at the White House. And whereas Senator Swazensky has been married for over 30 years to wife Patty, she ought to be receiving this proclamation, I think. Is that right? And has raised two wonderful children, John and Erica, and has welcomed two grandchildren. And whereas Senator Swazensky has served in the legislature for 2,801 days, working on behalf of, I don't know who counted that, but working on behalf of Eden Prairie to pass legislation important to cities. And whereas Senator Swazensky is one of 25 Minnesota lawmakers to be recognized as a 2024 legislator of distinction by the League of Minnesota Cities. And whereas Senator Swazensky earned the recognition by working to securing bipartisan passage of legislation to clarify the authority and role of school resource officers to ensure students and teachers have a safe learning environment. Now therefore be it resolved. The Eden Prairie City Council proclaims today, Tuesday, September 3, 2024, as Senator Steve Swazensky Day in the city of Eden Prairie, Minnesota. Ronald E. Case, Mayor, on behalf of council members, Councilmember Kathy Nelson, Mark Freyberg, PG Narayan, and Lisa Toomey.
Hugs have taken on a new meaning in my life this summer, but that's a whole nother story. I don't mean to correct you, Mayor, but when these guys were heading into battle, and they needed a flag, and so they knock on Betsy Ross's door, they knew she was a seamstress, and go, and they were yelling, we need a flag, we need a flag. And Betsy Ross looks at them and goes, just a Minuteman. And the name stuck, and that's how the Minuteman got their name.
Dad joke, dad joke.
No, no, it's a college level. And she goes back, and a couple minutes later, she comes forward with the flag, and she says to the guys, you know, so what do you think? And that was our nation's first flag poll. And what do you think of the flag?
Survey.
Flag poll, yeah.
You're kidding. I'm sure your students loved it.
You know, I don't know what to say. I'm humbled, you know. I'm just so blessed that I got to spend 33, 31 years of my life in Eden Prairie teaching. I never regretted a Monday or looked forward to a Friday. It was purely a joy and pleasure. The students and the parents and the community were a blessing to a teacher. And now I get, after eight years of serving Eden Prairie, again, not as a teacher, but as a senator, it's, again, I've never regretted a Monday or looked forward to a Friday yet in that role either, although I must admit, the school resource officer issue did get me a few more gray hairs. But I think it was resolved, and it's a classic example of how a bill becomes a law 101, and compromise, and compromise, and compromise. And, you know, and at one point, I came up with this theory of life, and that, you know, that the purpose of our existence is to solve as much of the puzzles possible before we perish. And last year at the state fair, so I wish this happened this year, but it was last year, I'm at the state fair, and I was staffing, I'm trying not to say manning, but I'm, you know, stuck in my way, so to speak. I was staffing the booth at the state senate, and I met Patty after, my wife, and we went and had a beer, and we get to, after we get the beer, and we're looking around, there's no spot to sit. And so, this couple goes, join us, you know, and total state fair. And we're sitting down, what's your favorite food? What's your favorite ride? What do you like to do? And this guy looks over, and he sees my state senate shirt, and he goes, do you work at the state senate? And I said, well, yeah, I do. And then my wife outed me and said, well, he's a state senator. And invariably, what oftentimes happens next is Democrat or Republican, with almost a tone. And their response was, thank you for your willingness to serve. And we don't hear that enough in public service. And it was just a joy and a pleasure that they went off and on and on and on about how difficult they know it is to be a public servant. And so, I thank you guys, because words and proclamations like this don't happen as a person by myself. I stand on the shoulders of giants. I relish the opportunity for, because I know some people may think I have all these ideas up here. There's none. They all come from lobbyists and constituents and people that come to my office, and they say, we have an idea. And when the League of Cities comes in, they, my door is open, because they have some pretty great ideas on how the, I'm shocked when I find out there's over 800 cities in Minnesota. But nonetheless, I don't know what to say other than thank you from the bottom of my heart for this honor and this privilege. And I hope you guys have, you know, as Humpty Dumpty, you know, he had a great fall, and it was to make up for his lousy summer. So, I hope you didn't have a lousy summer, and you have a great fall. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you for your service. And if you need to run, we won't be offended. I know yours incredibly busy. All right. Where are we at here? Approval of the, well, you know what? Let me pause. Thank you. Any council members, Steve, just turn around, don't walk out yet. Any council members wish to, you don't have to, I'm putting you on the spot, say anything?
I'll say something. Senator, you taught my kids, and you definitely gave them a lot of ideas when you taught them. I think it's like 20 years ago, and they loved you, you know, with the style that you have. And they talk about it, and they talk about you more than any other teachers. So, I'm sure you touched thousands of students in Eden Prairie last 31 years, and total service of 33 years of as a teacher. And I'll say, Senator, last from 16 to now, and you also, I get to know you a little better, and you're awesome. And you definitely don't represent as a Democrat or Republican. You truly represent Eden Prairie, and thank you so much.
Anyone else? Don't have to.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I agree with PG, but actually, I would like, you did not, you did not have any of my children in class, because they are nonexistent. But I remember meeting someone, I cannot remember the gentleman's name, I'm sorry, but his office is right next to yours, and he said that every single person in the Capitol loves you, whether Democrat or Republican. And I know that everybody here feels the same way. So, thank you for your service to Eden Prairie and even other areas of the state, too. I know that you helped other people. So, thank you very much.
Anything else? Go ahead.
You know, I can't pass this up. I got to thank you for what you've done. Through many conversations you and I have had, I've got a very high respect for you. How you can bring together, that's one of your real strengths, as I see it. And now you're on the Commission of Civility. I think Mayor said something, it'd be nice to take that to Washington. But you know, it's one thing, like, you know, when we talk, so many problems we face, whether it's at a local level, a state level, and end up, say, also on a national level, the resolution's in the middle. The resolution isn't here, or it's here. And I think the secret to your success as our senator, and why I admire you so much, is that you know, you understand that. And I think I've learned much from you in our conversations, and I thank you, my friend. There you go. Keep it going.
I'll have to also say, you were one of my kids' favorite teachers of all time. And the job you've been doing at the legislature is tremendous. And so, definitely thank you for that. Hopefully, you'll continue for a very long time doing it. And all I can say is, keep it up. You're going in the right direction.
Thank you, Senator.
As I said, on the shoulders of giants.
Thanks. Take care.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on then to the approval of the agenda. Before I ask for a motion, I believe there are a couple items to add.
Just one item.
Oh, just one for PG Narayan, council member. Anybody else then? Okay. Approval of the agenda with the addition of the one council member report. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition of a council member report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. All right. Moving on to minutes, let's clump them together unless you wish to separate them. Any edits, any changes, comments on either the workshop held Tuesday, August 20th minutes, or the council meeting same day? If not, is there a motion to approve both?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. City council meeting held Tuesday, August 20th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. I think this has to be the shortest consent calendar I can recall seeing in forever. For those listening at home or in the audience, consent calendars often will list out, not necessarily housekeeping, but fairly perfunctory, or not where they are needing further discussion, though council members can pull any items they wish. So, any concerns on any of them, but particularly B and C? And if not, let's go ahead and make a motion.
I'll move approval of items A to C under consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Getcho, we have one public hearing tonight.
We do, Mayor. As you recall, on an annual basis, you vote to accept and distribute your Community Development Block grant funds. But also, there's additional requirements, and tonight is one of those requirements, where you hold a public hearing, simply hold a public hearing, no other action, on our annual performance and evaluation report on how we used our CDBG funds. These are federal funds, passed through and managed by HUD at the federal level, Housing and Urban Development. As a way of background, we typically receive in the neighborhood of, somewhere of, you know, $300,000 a year approximately. We won't know what we're going to receive next year till spring. However, those funds are used to support low to moderate income persons with mainly housing needs. So, we have put almost all this money internally toward our First Time Home Buyer Program and our Housing Rehab Program, and also toward emergency services, of which many are provided by our service providers, such as Prop, Prop Food Shelf, and Senior Community Services. So, we help people out with emergency assistance that they may need. So, in the packet is, I believe it's a 30-page report, talking about who we've served and how we've served them. And we have to hold one public hearing following that calendar year, or it's not calendar year, actually. The CDBG funds are kind of a July to July. So, this is a requirement of HUD that you hold a public hearing over our Performance and Evaluation Report from 2023. And then, again, you need to take no action. You just need to hold, and then make a motion to close the public hearing.
And again, you can envision that the Congress, as they're sending quite a bit of money aggregately out across the nation to every city, really, in their mandate that we hold this type of public hearing, really wants simply the light to shine on this idea that they are dispensing money, not to give us approval, but they can, people can certainly give us recommendations. But really, it's just simply to have every council across the United States of America listening to people's responses on the fact that Congress sent this money out. Okay. So, counsel, this is a public hearing. I'm assuming, since we're not actually going to vote on anything, if you want to talk or add any comments, we can do it after we close the public hearing. Is that fine? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Consolidate Annual Performance and Evaluation Report? Seeing none, then, counsel, is there a motion to approve closing the public hearing?
Want to close, oh, no, sorry. Sorry. Want to close public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on just that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Counsel, anything else you wish to say or share about this topic before we move on? Okay. Moving on to payment of claims. Is there a motion? Well, let me ask you first, are any of the expenditures, again, the classic sense of check writing, which doesn't happen anymore, any expenses that you wish to know more about? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
I move for approval of payment of claims, as submitted.
Is there a second? Further discussion? A roll call.
Councilmember Freyberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right, moving on to reports of council members. Councilmember Narayan.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you, Sarah, can you bring up that? There you go. Thank you. I just want to highlight the ridership data for the South to Transit for the state fair event took place last week. Can you go to the second slide? This is some amazing numbers. We transported more than 100,000 passengers in the, is it seven-day period, I think?
10.
Yeah, 10-day period.
Maybe. 11, 11 if you count.
Except the Labor Day. I think Labor Day, they did not.
11 days.
11 days, 11 days if you include Labor Day.
Okay. So, it's still 100,000 is a huge number. And that's, the other side is around 30% more than last year's. So, the complexity of transporting close to 100,000 people from Eden Prairie to state fair is a logistical nightmare, I would say. It's very challenging. And it's, the peak ridership is around 15,000 per day. And this, again, that's a record number. And top of it, all these things that we received around 95% customer satisfaction survey from the riders. Next slide. So, if you look at the annual ridership trend, you can see before COVID kind of hit 115,000, then just dipped dramatically, and we almost pre-COVID time in terms of ridership. Next slide. And if you look at the And if you look at the per-day rate, and you can see, we are also very close to the pre-COVID ridership level. And then, for a transit company, the ridership is, the COVID was very, very difficult time because everything shut down, and you had to really transform the whole organization and re-ramp it to make this happen. And this year, they started looking at, we started looking at kind of market share, what is the total number of people attended, which is how many people that we give a ride to. And we are around two, almost 3%. And I want to add, Mark Freiber is also in the Southwest Transit Commission. Mark, anything else that, you seen these numbers, anything else that you can add?
When I was sent these numbers, the one thing that I looked at, that I, you know, pretty impressed with, was market share. Because no matter if your ridership is up or down in a year, that percent of the total attendance, you know, is, you know, is glaring when you start looking at. This year is the highest we ever had, you know, 2.88% of all fairgoers rode our Southwest Transit buses. And that goes back to, you know, the heyday when, before, you know, COVID, it even beat those numbers. And so, that growth, and it's happened, you know, three, you know, three good years right there, 2022, 23, and now 24 is when we peaked. I see that going up continually, especially with that satisfaction rating. I'm very happy with that.
Just a quick explanation that the Southwest Transit Commission is composed of, two, four, six?
Three cities.
Three cities, but seven commissioners, and then the non-voting eighth. So, Chaska Chanhasan and Eden Prairie. Generally, well, each city can send two. We started some 15 years ago sending our, two of our Councilmembers. So, Councilmember Freiberg and Councilmember Narayan represent the people of Eden Prairie on the Southwest Transit Commission. And next year, because it rotates, that seventh member rotates among the cities, it will be Eden Prairie's year, so we'll have the opportunity to have a third Commissioner that will hail from Eden Prairie. Both Councilmember Freiberg and Narayan, is there an easily understood basic explanation for why we're improving the way we did, especially over last year? Is it marketing? Is it luck? Is it just we don't know why?
Well, if I may, that's because.
Go ahead, Mark.
Recently, we hired a new CEO last year, Eric Hanson, who brought his own vision, surround himself with thinking beyond block people, and strong marketing, absolutely. We've even gotten involved in, you know, a lot of rebranding to upgrade the look. And I expect this to continue. I mean, I don't think we've, you know, we've seen the end of the creativity of it.
It's a great answer. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, this is Toomey was just saying, I think that she was saying, it was very good weather. So, I'm sure a lot of people went to the.
Good point.
Fair, and overall, that, you know, besides, I agree with the marker that Eric has built a good team, organization, and, and that's customer satisfaction come from that, right? 95%, that's pretty impressive.
Very. Well, thank you. Thank you for representing us, and I've always appreciated having Southwest Metro in our city and giving our residents this, I think, pretty amazing service opportunities for us, so. All right, Mr. Getcho, we are moving on to report of City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned in the HRA meeting, September is the month to set preliminary tax levies in the state of Minnesota. And you took action on your HRA levy. Tonight, we asked that you take action on the preliminary levy for the regular city budget and other tax levies. As I mentioned, at this time every year, this is the ceiling. You're setting the ceiling of what your levy can be. You can actually lower it between now and the end of the year, but you cannot raise it. It has been our history for many, many years that this levy that is set in September is the levy that is usually approved in December, because we do most of our work in the spring, in the summer. So, by the time we get here, there shouldn't be really any surprises or anomalies. And quite frankly, the tax, proposed tax statement that our residents are going to get in November, we'd like it to be closest to what would actually be adopted. But you need to hold a public hearing and vote on that budget in December. So, I have a few, few quick slides that you've seen in at least two different workshops. So, the Council's seen this. You've seen this in June and August, but I just wanted to do this for everybody else before you take a vote, and to let people know that our budget process is a two-year budget process, and it repeats. So, we're actually going to be restarting a cycle that started two years ago with citywide work plans, with a community survey that we actually did almost two years ago, and will be doing again in a few months, that provided information on our service levels and our residents' feelings on our service levels, that provided information to the Council in addition to all your financial information, that allowed you to think about how you're going to set the budget. And this is the second year of a two-year budget, so city staff actually prepare, they prepare two years' worth of budgetary numbers, and they adjust in the second year, how does insurance look? How do utilities look? What changes might not be made? But you'd actually be surprised at the amount of change that isn't needed in the second year of the budget. But it allows us to plan ahead for all of our capital projects and all of our personnel. So, you know two years in advance if we need additional employees, additional programs, additional services. So, here we are at the tail end of the second year of a two-year budget, of which you've already devoted a few workshops to. And also, you know, the, the survey that we had was, was very clear that people enjoy the services that they get at the city level. They come to appreciate them. You're going to see they get them at a, a very good value, but they want that to continue. And we are compared very favorably with our peers throughout the nation, not just the state, in many of those core services that we provide. The entire survey is available on the website. We talk a lot about community characteristics, community concerns, community issues, but I just focused on service level information for the budget. When you put together both the '24 and '25 budget, you had goals related to that particular budget that you were putting together. You had goals that you needed to be balanced. You wanted to be conservative on the revenues that you were going to bring in, and also on the expenditures, so we would not go over budget, and we have not done that. And you always take a look on a regular basis as to what your long-range capital needs are, what our fees are, what our charges for services are, and also understanding that the majority of what we do as a city is a people-service-oriented business. So, you'll see a few charts later on that close to 70, 75% of our budget is benefits and salaries and staffing for our employees. So, obviously, we want to have very strong hiring programs, onboarding, professional development, training, recruitment, and competitive pay. And that's all a part of the employees that we bring on. As it relates to this two-year budget, currently, we're in a year where there are five elections. You're going to see the administration budget goes down next year because there are zero elections at Eden Prairie. But each department had a few major programs that they were working on besides the everyday service delivery. And actually, one of those, the fire department, affected some of the discussion in the summer workshops, because we did a major fire staffing study and did a slight adjustment to the levy between June and August based on that. We also have some capital purchases for fire, a major remodel of City Hall. And again, I talked earlier about recruitment, a lot happening in Parks and Recreation with trails, buildings, programs, events, public works, infrastructure that we continue to invest in. We just had a workshop a couple hours ago on race equity. Our next workshop in two weeks is going to be on sustainability. Those are two major issues or priorities of the City Council, and housing as well. We just talked about that with the, with the CDBG program. We have a lot of policies related to housing. So, when it comes down to the preliminary budget that we're looking at on the revenue side of things, again, the huge percent of what we bring into our general fund, this does not count our enterprise funds, this is not water, sewer, debt, tax increment, financing, economic development, our liquor fund, this is strictly the general fund, the general operations, mentioned with the service delivery, that the vast majority of our revenue comes in taxes. But we also do get permits, licenses, we get very little intergovernmental revenue. If, if you were to show this slide at maybe 200 other cities in the state of Minnesota, the second-largest source of revenue by far could be intergovernmental revenue, be it local government aid or other state aid that is in the millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars, in, in cities that are close to our size. But charges for services, which would be a lot of our recreation programs, our, our community center, is a big part of our revenue as well, and we're forecasting about a 5% increase in total revenue. And that's just the budget part. The largest source of revenue is property taxes. I just mentioned that. Second-largest source is charges for services. The largest source of charges for services is our community center memberships in our general fund. And as you know, we talked about this in workshop, we are happy to see that a lot of that revenue is getting back to pre-COVID levels. Also, licensing and permit, permit revenue, development revenue, is our third-largest source of revenue, and we do want to budget that conservatively. We've had many years, you can see from 2018 to 2023, where we've exceeded our revenue in development revenue, but we still want to budget conservatively. All the dollars above that more lighter blue line goes into our capital maintenance fund. So, those are, that's less money you have to borrow in the future, less of a levy you have to make for capital improvements. So, that's been a really positive as well. Moving to the expenditure side of things, I mentioned kind of breaking down the six major departments. We're actually looking at only a 4.3% increase in spending for next year. And considering that inflation and wage adjustments are actually, that, that number or higher, we're pretty pleased with that number. That's mostly what these expenditure increases are. There aren't any major new programs. The, the new personnel and the largest increase is in the fire budget that we propose, based on the results of the staffing study that talk about bringing on more employees to staff more stations, more hours. And there's more to come on that. There'll be many slides related to that in December. But those are additional new positions that you've been talking about this summer. When you look at the total budget, you can see in a pie graph form, a majority of what our costs are, are wages and benefits, and even within those internal service funds, like facilities, IT and fleet, there are costs within that that are employee, staff costs. But the difference between this year and last year is even greater of an emphasis on wages and benefits. The total budget change proposed from '24 to '25 is a vast majority wages and benefits. And you can actually see that some of the areas are going down. Our contracted services number is actually proposed to decrease next year. And I said this in workshop, many of your efforts in sustainability have led to, it's still an increase. We have to have an increase in our facilities budget of about 213,000, but that number could be closer to 300,000 or 400,000, if not for many of our energy-saving programs. So, in summary, when you, well, actually, not in summary, when you go from the budget to the levy, we're proposing initially what would be a general fund levy of 6.4%, but because our debt levy and capital improvement fund levy are flat, the end result to the taxpayer would be a proposed levy increase of 5.8% and a total budget change of 4.1% in all of those funds. The debt levy, again, stays the same. The market value and the effect on the taxpayer is reflected in value. The mayor said this many times, it's kind of a three-pronged thing. What is the value of your property? What is the city's tax levy? What is the city's tax rate? We've actually seen a very much a flattening in the increases in residential property values, and a decrease in commercial values, and a decrease in multifamily apartment values. I will, I will say that having a decrease in commercial value of only 1% in an increase in industrial of almost 7% leaves you with an overall increase in combined commercial and industrial property of 2% is actually pretty good, considering what you're seeing with all the vacancies of commercial property in other cities. And we do have vacancies, but I think those commercial numbers are down even more in other communities. So, we're actually holding our own pretty well. And I think you're seeing throughout the metro somewhat of a flattening, at least in the 2023 sales year of residential property. But what that means, though, is because commercial is down and multifamily's down, there is a little bit more of a shift. The homeowner, the residential homeowner is going to pick up a little bit more of the tax burden that, that is a result of commercial decreasing. And a lot of what happens on an individual's tax bill is going to depend on the value of their property. I talked about this in workshop, that properties low, valued at less than a half a million dollars have some exclusion of their market value. That's a statewide program. They also are taxed at a lower rate per the state of Minnesota. That's every home in the state of Minnesota being taxed at 1% at 500 or below, 500,000 or below, but taxed at 1.5% beyond that. So, depending on the value of your home, you're going to have a different change in your tax bill, and that varies. But what I think is also good news is how we end up looking compared to our peers. And I say many times that we don't build a budget compared to how any other city will build a budget or have a tax levy. But when we're done doing that, we look around and we see how we fare amongst other cities. And the graph on the right, I'm sorry, on the left, shows you that our taxable rate, the rate that's multiplied by your property value and taxable, tax capacity value to give you your city property tax, is one of the lowest in Hennepin County. That's Hennepin County. I know it's one of the lowest in the metro, because those are cities above 10,000. There are cities that are much smaller than us that have higher tax rates. And when you look at the graph on the right, there's only one city of our similar size, peer city, that is looking at a levy that's less than 5.8%. Everybody seems to be kind of in the six, seven, eight or above, and every city's different. Other cities might be dealing with major capital projects, their debt levies are going up. Many I know are doing what we're doing with our fire department staffing. They're adding a percent or two based on fire department staffing. And so, there's a myriad of reasons that those levies might be different, but at the end of the day, we have one of the lowest in the area, and that tells you that our tax rate is going to stay that way as well. So, what is next? Hopefully, at this meeting, for sure by the end of the month, the Council will set their preliminary levy, and then, every single taxpayer in the city will receive notice that we've set December 3rd as a date that anybody could attend at the city level to, for a public hearing related to taxes. There will be hearings at the school level and at the county level as well, and we would anticipate to have a public hearing and take action on a final budget in December. So, with that, my final comment is then that the ask of you tonight is to pass resolutions related to setting the preliminary property tax levy, the budget, and setting the hearing date. And with that, I can certainly answer any questions that the Council may have.
First, I want to underscore what you had, I think, on Slide 2, showing the calendar of budget discussions from 2023, January through '24, showing that we've been at this for nearly two years. And, and I know sometimes it seems maybe to a resident just dialing in or just watching tonight's meeting that this is a really important, momentous decision we're making, and... And we're not glossing over, but we act on it fairly quickly. Well, we've seen this a lot for a year and nine or 10 months. I just want to underscore that. Second thing I just want to underscore that you said, that if people wonder, you know, why does Eden Prairie have such a regularly fairly low levy increase? Well, a couple things. One is we may not always, it's not apples to apples. Some cities are doing things, as you mentioned, from major capital projects to increasing their fire department full-time at a faster rate than we might be looking at. There's just, it's not apples to apples. But our tax base, which is just the amount of property that's in your city that if you sold it, are we over 13? What are we at now?
Fourteen.
$14 billion tax base on our 35.2 square miles, I believe, to be exact, is really healthy, and the mix of 60% residential and 40% commercial-industrial. So we broaden that so that if apartments go up or down one year, it's not going to, you know, we're not 90% apartments, it's not going to hurt us badly that one year or residential goes up or down. So there's a lot of things that Senator Swazinski talked about standing on the, you know, shoulders of giants. Well, we stand on the shoulders of, well, since 1968 for sure with the master guide plan, but 32, 52, 56 years of councils and mayors that have really made some great decisions in terms of development. Third thing I'd like to say is that people sometimes don't like development, and they often will make accusations that all we care about is money. We're just going to approve projects just to get more tax base. And we never look at that. We just never look at that. That's not, that's not relevant. We're excited that we're a city that people want to move into, that businesses want to move into, that people want to reinvest and build. And it's that that now keeps tax levy reasonable, that because we have this strong tax base, which drives a lower tax rate, which drives then year after year, the ability to keep our levy lower. So it is connected. The fact that, I'll give one example, the fact that we approved recently in a residential area, there was a one-story, $2 million-valued industrial building or warehouse or office or something. And the proposal came in to build, okay, I'm forgetting now, 22 homes or something that were 1.2 million average or something, but the tax base was going from 2 million to 20 million. We didn't go out to get that, and that's not the reason we voted for it, but it shows how our tax base keeps increasing, which then our budget is what we feel we need to raise to meet the needs of the residents who elect us. That amount, 50, north side of 50 million, comes from whatever tax base we have. So if we have an $8 billion tax base, you raise $50 million from it. If you have a $14 billion tax base, you raise $50 million from that tax base. So our tax base does directly positively impact our ability to keep the levy as low as we can and still address and still meet the needs of our residents who we hear from all the time, not just in emails and at the grocery store, but in our very extensive surveys, which give us 90-plus percent ratings. In fact, approval ratings, some of the highest in the United States of America, as you mentioned, in many categories. So we feel, oh, and by the way, elections are ways to give us feedback, that we're listening well and making decisions appropriately based on what our residents, what we believe and feel they want. If they don't agree, then again, there are elections that can, you can become part of. I hope everybody votes, and of course, there's the survey, and then just call us up or email us. So with that, council, what would you like to ask questions about, make comments on before we, and we can talk about it after we make a motion as well, but anything any of you want to talk about right now regarding this resolution to certify? Well, there's three items there, four, actually. Council? Are you okay making the motion and voting? Would somebody make the motion on all four bullet points?
I'll move to adopt the resolution to certify the proposed 2025 property tax levy to be $49,978,940 and set December 3rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM as the meeting, which will include discussion of the budget and provide for public comment and accept the proposed 2025 budget of $62,778,864 and consent and approve to the HRA tax levy of $220,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I've got one real quick thing.
Sure, please.
You know, one thing you didn't mention is that we have been working very hard at energy efficiency, and it's cut our energy costs for the whole city, be it for traffic lights, you know, streetlights. Everything else we use has been cut quite a bit over the years. And our public works department keeps coming up with new ideas all the time. And so that's very, very worthwhile to the community. Also, we keep our parks up so that we don't let them disintegrate and then have to come back to do them. And it both gets safe, good parks for the community, but in the long term, it costs less. So those are the types of things that you could go on and on from water center or whatever, but we do work hard at that, and that does allow us to keep our taxes at the reasonable end of the metropolitan taxes.
Well, well said. And we do have a high-quality community, and yes, it does increase our home values, which increases the general tax base, but that benefits us when, if, and when we sell our house. And a lot of that is because people want to move into Eden Prairie, residents want to live here. We're known as a safe, high-quality community. And what I'm finding more and more as I do my meet-and-greet visits with Mr. Getcho and with Dave Lindahl, our manager, I call him Director of Community Development, or did I get that right? Yeah, I think so. The man, I know the manager piece, but I wanted to get the second part right, too. But we go out and we talk to, I think we're up to over 400 businesses. We've gone and actually sat down with the C-suite, and we chat, and we ask them, how are we doing and what else can we be doing? And we get tremendous positive feedback. Businesses are moving into Eden Prairie as quickly as they can find space and buildings to do that. So we have a lot going on that improves and continues to improve our reputation as a high-quality, safe community that people want to live in, work in, and recreate in. Ms. Councilmember Narayan?
I just want to emphasize the reason we, you may see, we don't have a lot of questions tonight, because we have seen this before, and we have seen this before, and we have seen this before multiple times with the staff, and we have a lot of questions. And we all kind of agree that high-quality service that we're providing, we need to have these changes and these budget changes.
And to your point, this is not staff coming up with these ideas and bringing it to us. Hey, what do you guys think? This is us picking up and reflecting back what our residents tell us, going to staff with our goals, with our objectives, and they develop the plans then to implement what we direct. And I've said this for years and years, 20-plus years, that if you want to know what the community of Eden Prairie, I'm making up a date here, in 1973, what they valued, read their budget. Their budget is the reflection, because it's where they spend their money. It's the reflection of their priorities, of their values, of the community. If that, if that council at the time, which I believe elections do their job, if that council was reflecting what the community wanted, then the budget becomes the document that is the living proof of what that community values and what it prioritizes. So we take it incredibly seriously. And again, it's our documents. What we let staff know is our perception of what our community and residents let us know. And I think we have good evidence to build our perceptions. And then if it's all working well and we listen well and staff, you know, implemented well, it all comes back and our, and our community is pleased, and we're doing what they want us to be doing and building this high-quality community with a really responsible and reasonable budget to do that. All right. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Wait, did we have, we had the motion, we had the second? Okay. Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Mr. Getcho and council, is there anything else?
There's none.
Mayor, can I just add one item? Just compliment to staff.
Please.
I don't know how many of you received call complaint-wise or compliment-wise after the storm. I think our staff did an awesome job of cleaning up the road and cleaning the park, and just wanted to say thank you to the staff.
And immediately on the fly, and I think, Mr. Ellis, this is you, but having the yard waste drop-off site open two extra days, and I was there twice, and just, and it's very busy, and I think people really, really appreciate that. And it keeps our community cleaned up, that, you know, super fast in the moment after a storm like this hits. So yes, to the staff, thank you. And I know based on what was up at Highway 4 and 5, when I also happened to be there at 9:25 that evening, driving home, I called Mr. Getcho at home, apologized for that still, but the police and fire response was amazing. I couldn't even begin to count the 20 emergency safety vehicles that were out there with lights. Anyway, we just have, again, phenomenal public safety, public works, Parks and Recreation planning. Did I get anything? Julia's saying, did I get everybody? HR?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I think we got everybody. Finance, Tammy?
Accounting.
All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the city council meeting tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, this meeting is adjourned.